Good evening. I'd like to welcome you guys to the Planning and Zoning meeting for the City of Smyrna. Today is April 13th, 2015. It's 6:00 PM. It is a Monday, and this meeting's called Order. At this time, we'd like to ask you to turn off all your cellular devices as they have a tendency to interfere with our recording equipment. For those of you joining us for the first time, this meeting's conducted much like a council meeting. As such, each application will include a presentation from city staff, followed by a question and answer session between staff and the board. Following staff's presentation, we'll have the applicant present their case and answer any questions. Once all the questions have been satisfied, we'll have an opportunity for anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to the application. We do ask that you come forward one at a time, state your name and address for the record, sign the sign-in sheet at the podium, and please direct all your comments to the board. All right. The first item on the agenda is Z15-002. This is the rezoning of the subject property from Residential Townhouse District (RTD) to General Commercial for use of the property for commercial purposes. It's 5.039 acres in Land Lot 342. It is a vacant landlocked property off of South Cobb Drive at the terminus of Askay Drive. The applicant is William L. Askay. Mr. Martin, in the background, please.
Good evening. Chairman Powell pretty much summed up the case pretty well. You guys will hear it tonight. You'll make your recommendation to Mayor and Council. Mayor and Council will hold a public hearing on May 18th, and they'll make the final decision at that time. As Chairman Powell stated, this property is a landlocked piece of property. It is, there is no public road frontage access to this property. The only way to access this property is through Askay Drive and through the commercial development off of Askay Drive. Mr. Askay is owner of the property. He is also the owner of the commercial property to the east. The subject property is approximately 1.3 acres in size. It's located in Ward 5, and it's got a current zoning of RTD, which is Residential Townhouse District. Mr. Askay is requesting to rezone the property to General Commercial, which is the same zoning classification as the adjoining property to the east, the commercial development. If you look at this zoning map, you can see the subject property is bounded on the north by an apartment complex that's located in an incorporated Cobb County. It's located on the west side by Westfield Trace Townhome Subdivision, and on the south by the Parket Church subdivision, Townhome Subdivision, which is currently under development, and then by Mr. Askay's commercial development on the east. The site is currently vacant. There's no development whatsoever on it. It's a wooded lot with floodplain and streams running through it. He is proposing to build a 14,400-square-foot metal commercial building. And if you look at our future development map, the subject site is classified as medium-density residential. The properties to the west and south are, have also had the medium-density residential land use classification. The commercial property to the east is owned, or has a designation of Community Activity Center. Mr. Askay is also requesting to change the proposed future land use designation from medium-density residential to commercial activity center. This is the proposed site plan. You can see the building and subsequent parking area is going to be located on a small portion of this property. It's going to be sort of sandwiched in between a tree and some sanitary sewer that runs through the site. You will access this property directly from Askay Drive and through the commercial development. There'll be a 50-foot undisturbed buffer that will be provided along the southern stream and the western stream that runs along the western boundary, along with a 25-foot impervious surface area setback. So all in all, there'll be at a minimum of 50, or a 75-foot setback, and 50 of that will be an undisturbed buffer. These are pictures of the subject property as of April 6th. These are pictures of the adjacent properties. The two buildings, the two metal buildings and, two pictures of metal buildings are the commercial establishment that are joined to the east. The picture of the development site, that's the park on Church Townhome Subdivision that's currently under development. Community Development recommends approval of the proposed rezoning, subject to the provisions of the GC zoning district within the city's zoning ordinance. If you guys have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you.
Any questions for Mr. Martin? Rusty, thank you very much. This is a public hearing at this time. We'd like to have the applicant come forward, and welcome.
Thank you.
Can you tell us a little bit about your plans?
Certainly. And good evening. For the record, I'm Kevin Moore here on behalf of the applicant and the owner, William Askay. This property was purchased by Mr. Askay in 1989. He developed and constructed Askay Drive that comes off of South Cobb Drive and developed and built the commercial buildings that are office warehouse buildings that Rusty just showed you in the pictures, which he still owns today. This property, though, he had planned to go ahead and develop it in the early 2000s and build, go ahead and build on it, put a hold on it. Now, though, is ready to go ahead and finish that out. It's landlocked as a parcel now, zoned to a townhome category, but not accessible to a public road. In fact, bounded on two sides by stream and floodplain to access either other parcels that are townhome parcels to be able to get to a public road. In fact, as Rusty explained, you can see just pictorial, you can see on the, from the site plan, from the layout, from the overheads, from the zoning map, that the only realistic access is through his existing commercial project off of Askay Drive. And that's what would be the plan here. The property is very limited because there is a good deal amount of floodplain. It actually works, in this instance, to the property and Mr. Askay's advantage in that it kind of encases or encapsulates his ability to develop and build an office warehouse to a very limited area that is just there, adjacent to his existing asphalt and existing buildings, so that that fits very nicely, but then have to remain and have, as Rusty explained, not only the 50-foot undisturbed stream buffer, but 25-foot impervious, which means no asphalt or parking can go into that, impervious setback, as well as the floodplain actually buffers against what is an existing townhome development, Westfield Trace, as well as the one that's under development, which was also in the picture. So it actually works to his advantage in terms of limiting that down, which he'll have to do as far as bringing this forward today and to meet current City of Smyrna codes and ordinances and development standards as it relates to all of those items. Again, there really is no use whatsoever for this property as currently zoned. It'd have to access through commercial property, which is not according to standards, and would have no real value or economic viability as a townhome development. And the reality is, as an extension of his existing commercial development, it fits in nicely without providing any impact to adjoining existing developments or ones that are underway. With that, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have and would respectfully request your recommendation for approval as presented to the GC category. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Now, this is a public hearing. At this time, we would like to ask if there's anyone in attendance that would like to speak in favor of or opposition to this application. This is Z15-002. Come forward, state your name and address for the record, and tell us a little bit about...
I'm Heidi Morton. I live in Westfield Trace, to the west of the property. And now that I see the map and what they're going to do with the property, which we did not know before, I'm a little bit, I'm feeling better about it, but I'm just, was wondering what was, I'm concerned about the value of my property decreasing with this commercial building behind it, and I'm concerned about noise and additional pollution because of the trees being gone, the water's going to go somewhere, and the pollution from the building itself. Wasn't that one of your things? And my first concern was the value of my property. To look out my backyard and see an aluminum building is not my first choice. That our neighborhood already has trouble. It goes down in value faster than other ones when there's a depressed market, and it takes longer to get up to the top of the market when everything else is going up. I don't know why. And I just had a feeling that this is not going to help to have this warehouse in my backyard. But it looks like there's going to be a lot of trees and a big buffer from the creek.
As I understand it, the property that's going to be under construction is surrounded by creeks, so you're going to benefit...
Well, one of those creeks is in my backyard.
Right. You're going to benefit from that buffer.
Yeah.
Because they're limited too, and maybe Rusty can come back and tell us a little bit about the buffer and how much vegetation's going to be between the two of us. Might allay some of the fears.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Morton.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to come forward and state your name for the record? Yeah, come on.
Just have a question here. My name is Raymond Marrero. I also live at Westfield Trace, at 1010 Westfield Trace. One of the concerns I have, of course, is that the signage for this new proposal and rezoning was only put on South Cobb Drive, and we didn't hear anything about this meeting until we actually got notified from our councilwoman that this was actually going on on Friday. So I'm concerned with the signage just being put in one area that didn't let anybody else in our community know that this was actually going to be coming up. The other question I have, or concern, let me put it this way, is, of course, the buffer I understand that they say they'll keep some trees and they'll keep a good buffer zone, but the city did come by, put a new sewer line through my backyard, said they were going to keep the trees, and they tore all the trees down. And then, instead of putting new grass or good grass in there, they just chopped up all the trees and put dirt on top of it. So if that's going to be the guarantee we're going to get for this, I'm more concerned that somebody's just going to cut all the trees down and all we're going to see is the back of a commercial property instead of something else. So those are my concerns as to what's going to go on with that. I don't know what kind of guarantees the city will get from the developer as to what they're going to keep and what they're going to tear down. And right now, I'm not having a very good feeling with the, with the, well, with the service I've been getting from the city with the sewer line that just came in at the back of my property. So far, it's still mostly dirt and very little grass. So I'm not sure, I'd like to know what kind of guarantees we're going to get, that we're actually going to have something that's going to be, pretty much, something that we will be able to live with when we come out on our back decks and could sit out and not going to look at the back of somebody's parking lot.
Well, what we'll do is we'll let Rusty come back and tell us a little bit about what the requirements are, because we can only hold people to the requirements. Could you spell your last name for me, Ray?
Sure. It's M.A.R.R.E.R.O.
Thank you very much, Mr. Marrero. I really appreciate you coming in tonight, and please sign the sign-in sheet.
So you know who I am.
Feel free to come forward if you've got something else, if somebody else wants to come speak, that's absolutely why we're here.
Yes, it's Inez Lewis. I also am a homeowner over on Westfield Trace, and my backyard actually faces that, that building that's going to be going up. And one of my concerns, of course, is the buffer zone. I do not want to look out and just see South Cobb Drive from my back balcony. I would love to see some type of vegetation or some thought also for safety, because when you think of the apartments that are adjacent or next to us, I don't want to now see our backyard as a walkway to get to South Cobb Drive quicker, because sometimes we do have people in that back area. Yes, we have fences or whatever, but that's our basement area. And I don't know about these two, but my basement area is not something I use all the time, and I don't want to come downstairs and see a stranger sleep on my porch or anything like that, because it's nobody back there. That's a real concern for me. I do have children, and I've been living in Cobb County forever, and I just want it to be a safe environment where I feel good about it, and when I'm on my back porch, I don't have to worry about looking at big trucks and things of that, and not sure about any strangers delivering something and say, "Hey, you know, that looks really exposed." Because after we lost a lot of our trees from the new sewer, we start having break-ins and things of that nature, because now the woods doesn't cover it. They can just see, wow, hmm, there's a nice exposed balcony, and we can just jump over it. And that's a concern for me.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Lewis. Anyone else in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application? All right. Before we ask Mr. Moore to come back, Rusty, Mr. Martin, would you give us a couple of the details associated with stream buffer in the undisturbed area?
Yeah. If you look at the, at the site plan above, along the southern boundary that runs from basically east to west, there's a stream buffer there, or there's a stream located We measure 50 feet undisturbed from the rest of vegetation, which is pretty much the area where the moving water doesn't allow any vegetation to grow, back 50 feet. And that area will be undisturbed, which means there'll be no development whatsoever in that area.
We're more concerned with the north-south.
I know. I'm trying to work my way around and answer everyone's question. From that point, once you get to that 50-foot undisturbed buffer, the city also imposes a 25-foot impervious surface area setback, which means they can take the trees out and they can replant grass or whatever, but they cannot put any hard surfaces where water cannot infiltrate the ground. So sometimes it just gets left as undisturbed buffer. Sometimes they need it for, you know, yard space or something else, but it totally depends on the development. That requirement is also going to be implied, applied on the western stream that runs north and south that backs up to your property. So you should have 50 feet on your side and 50 feet on our, on the development side, and then in addition to a 25-foot impervious surface area setback. But you guys also have to remember, there are floodplain issues related to this property. So there's going to be, probably where the building is located is probably the only buildable area on the property. So what that means is their building elevation has to remain above a certain elevation, floodplain elevation. So if that's set at 1,000 feet above sea level, then that's where they've got to remain to be able to build. We had that same issue with the town, with the townhomes on the south side. You got this huge property that's five acres, but you really may only be able to build on an acre of it. And if everything is within that floodplain, it's not going to be touched as well. So unless they compensate and do some cut and fill and maintain the same amount of flood capacity for the site. So that's stuff that all gets reviewed during, during plan, during the plan review process prior to permitting. And the city will go through that. The city engineer will look at it, and they'll do a hydrology study and make sure stormwater impacts aren't affecting downstream residents and all that. I wholly expect if we can, if I, I'll go back up there and change to the zoning map layer, and you can see how, how many trees there are in between the commercial development and the backs of your homes, so give you a better idea of what problem may remain. I mean, you can see that in relationship to where the, where the proposed building was on the site plan and where it is here. It's pretty, pretty heavily wooded.
When they did the sewer line, they knocked down a lot of trees.
Yeah, along the southern, along the southern boundary, along that southern stream.
Can you pull up the other map we were looking at again? Those three diagonal lines going south, south to north, right through the middle of the subject property, is that the sewer?
No. Where, where the city just did their work is along, just south of the building along the stream, and you can see that all the way from South Cobb Drive.
Behind your building, you can see that it's...
Yeah. So you can see where, you see where the bottom, bottom property line is highlighted in light blue? Yeah. Where it's sort of pointing, that's where the, that's where the city work was done. Okay.
Anyway, it looks like, I hope, a lot of trees will remain, and when they build it, they're not going to knock down every tree in that shape.
What concerns me is that...
Ladies, if we're going to, if we're going to make comments, I need you to come back to the podium and do it one at a time, please. And feel free to.
Mr. Martin, based on what you said, they may. See, that is not definitive. That's not something you can say will or won't happen, and that's a concern for me, because right now, we do have a quality of life that is very, very quiet, and that is my concern.
Yeah.
The property value, of course, but I do want to enjoy where I live and not to end up in a concrete jungle.
I wish I could give you a definitive answer. I just, they don't have development plans at this time. They have a conceptual plan that they're proposing to build. They'll be required to go through and create development plans, which relates to grading, stormwater, soil erosion, tree plan, and their site plan, lighting, and utilities. So we'll review all that time when it comes time for land development, and at that time, we'll be able to give you a definitive answer. But right now, we don't have that information. But, you know...
Mr. Martin, will the, at that point, before a commercial building permit is pulled, is there, is there a public hearing associated with that as well?
No.
Okay.
The, we, there is a commercial building item on the mayor and council's agenda, but that is purely notifying people that a commercial building permit has been issued. It's not, it's not an opportunity to stand up and oppose a commercial development or anything. It's purely a notification issue.
All right. Let's, if we, if we can, let's get Mr. Moore to come back and speak to some of the items, and maybe he can help, again, pacify some of these concerns. Mr. Moore, I know you're back there taking notes.
Correct.
Decreasing property value, pollution, noise, notific, well, backyard faces the building, buffer zone, safety, and then the other items that I had were notification issues, but if you could...
Sure. Be happy to address those, and I think can satisfy, you know, the questions that they've raised, because, you know, Rusty, being in his position at this point, he can't say for certain, because he doesn't have those plans in front of him for seeking a development permit. What he's got is, like he said, a conceptual submitted for purposes of zoning. But I'm, fortunately, I can say, I can say that the trees will remain. I don't have to say may. Those trees will remain that Rusty was pointing to. At a minimum, along that stream, you're going to have, along the Westfield Trace side where that stream is located, as you saw, if you go back to the, which way is back using the arrows?
Yeah. Go forward or...
There, right there. Yeah. If you look at this, you know, proposed site plan, what you see on the, on the left-hand side of your screen is that stream that's shared, the shared property line with Westfield Trace, the one that these good folks were talking about. So if you move from that to the center line of that, and you, and you move, at least 75 feet of that will remain as undisturbed. Those trees will remain. Where you see the building and parking area located is the only place on this property in general that you can develop and build. It's very limited, and that's what I was saying in my presentation. It's extremely limited property from that standpoint, so they won't have a building in their backyard, and in fact, it'll be well away from it and protected by those stream buffers, by the impervious setback buffers, and limited to really what you see on the screen in large measure. We are aware of the sewer project. It goes through Mr. Askay's property that the city worked on, and that's something completely out of our control, but did occur. But those trees will remain. It's not just may. They will remain in pretty much the entire area that you see, not encapsulated by that box, that will be, that will remain. There's some clearing limits that would go just beyond that box, and then there would be a fence as part of that, so you'll have some added security. It won't provide a cut-through at all. So it'll be, it will be fenced, it will be, trees will remain as shown here. So I can say that with absolute conviction for them.
So the property will be fenced, blocking access to South Cobb Drive?
That's right. And I think the, more so than that, is to Mr. Askay's benefit. The adjoining property that is the existing commercial or office warehouse building is his. He owns it, maintains it, leases it, and uses it. You can tell if you look at it from the pictures, he maintains that and keeps that up very well for that type of development. It's to his benefit to do that. He wants to maintain the quality and the value that he has in there, which is to their benefit as adjoining owners as well. So I think that, I can say that, Rusty, not in that position, but I, but I am. I can say that those trees will remain.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any questions for Mr. Moore while he's still at the podium?
Right. The use as general commercial is, it's not light industrial, so you are, you're limited. You don't have the ability to have manufacturing. You don't have the ability to create outside noise and disturbances like you might in an industrial, heavy industrial, light industrial type of use. It'll be the same uses that are ongoing in his existing buildings, which are office warehouse. You have a, it's limited, it's... You have a, it's limited, it's somebody that can come in and use it, use the warehouse interior import portion, not for distribution or that type of thing, but simply to, for interior storage of materials or trucks or whatnot as a, as a office and warehouse use.
Any further questions or comments?
Do you know which, how much of the property is in floodplain?
It's approximately four acres. Out of the 5.03 acres, from, from what I see, it's about four acres that is in floodplain.
And is that the property, the part of the property that's along the neighborhood in question?
Along both, yes, along the Westfield Trace neighborhood is floodplain going all the way down that side. The floodplain follows the creek and goes out even further, which, and you can't disturb the floodplain either. That's why.
Right.
I can say with absolute conviction, so.
So the idea being, you know, for future, you know, if somebody else bought the property and wanted to do something different, they're not gonna be able to really get any closer than what's shown on this plan?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's absolutely correct.
Any further questions or comments?
Yes. Do you have a contractor in mind for this?
Mr. Askay would be the, that would operate as the general contractor. He has that, or he would use somebody for that, but he would, as the owner, would be able to do that.
Okay.
Has that experience.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to address the notification issues since I was a question raised.
Yes, please, thank you.
This is a complicated site. State law and city ordinance requirements require that the property be posted on the closest, closest public thoroughfare. And when there's multiple, when the property fronts on multiple thoroughfares, it should be posted on each of those thoroughfares. This site presented a difficult challenge because it's, it's landlocked, it doesn't have any direct access to a public thoroughfare. So I, I talked about this with our community development director, Ken Sudrith, and discussed how we're gonna achieve adequate notification. And the plan was to post the property within the development, within the commercial development. So where the boundaries are that about the, the current Askay commercial development, we, we posted it. And you can, you can see that in these pictures. In addition, we, we posted out at the street at South Cobb Drive, at the term, where South Cobb Drive and Askay Drive intersect. That way, anyone going along South Cobb Drive understood there was a zoning request, and if you went down Askay Drive, you would see where the actual zoning request was. We felt that that met state guidelines and met our, our requirements for, for notification. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, but.
Any other notifications sent out?
Our city ordinance does not require letters to be sent out to surrounding property owners and stuff like that. Other municipalities do that, but not, not Smyrna.
And any media publications with the notification?
We will be posting the, the legal ad for the mayor and council meeting a minimum 15 days prior to the hearing in the Marietta Daily Journal, in the zoning section of the legal ads.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Any further discussion from the board? All right, since there's no further discussion, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Yes, I submit approval for this property zoning request, Z15-002, rezoning of the subject property from residential townhouse district to general commercial for the use of the property for commercial purposes.
That was a motion to approve? Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Okay, a motion to approve, Mr. Whittington. Give me a second. Second, Mr. Roberts, all in favor? Motion's approved 7-0. Thank you all for, for coming, and I would encourage you to reach out to both the developer and, and city staff, be good advocates for you to get your voice heard on any development that's adjacent to your property. Okay? But thank you for coming out, and feel free to come back anytime, we're not always this entertaining. All right, the next item on the agenda is Z15-003. This is the rezoning request of the subject property from R15 to RAD conditional for the development of six single-family homes. It's a 1.31 acre landlot, 592, 1514 Hawthorne Avenue. The client is, the applicant is Thule &amp; Thule Incorporated. Mr. Martin, the background, please.
All right. The zoning request will be obviously heard by you guys tonight, and you'll make a recommendation for mayor and council. It'll go to the mayor and council on May 18th for a final decision. This property is located at 1514 Hawthorne Avenue. It's 1.3 acres in size and is located Ward III. It is a vacant site with, with a cemetery located on it. You can't really see in this picture, but the southeast quadrant of the property is where the cemetery is currently located. There used to be a small church on this property. It burned down probably about seven years ago. The church went through the variance process, got all the variances to be able to rebuild. However, they, they never moved forward with those plans, so basically, the, the site sat vacant for the past seven years. The property is owned R15. The applicant is requesting to go to RAD conditional for the development of five townhome units and one detached single-family unit. As you can see, the property, the adjacent property in north is owned R15. To the east and west is also zoned R15, and to the south is R15 and RAD. The subject property has a future land use designation of moderate density residential. That means up to 4.5 units per acre. The, the zoning request, and there's an error on here, the applicant is proposing a development with a density of 4.58 units per acre, so they're over the threshold, barely over the threshold for moderate density residential. So they'll be required to seek a, a land use change to medium density residential. The surrounding land uses are suburban residential to the north, moderate density residential to the west and south, and medium density residential to the east. Here's the proposed site plan. As you can see, they're pretty much maximizing all available land around the, the existing cemetery. They'll have five single-family townhomes that'll, that'll front on Hawthorne Avenue with a five-foot front setback, 10-foot side setback, and 18-foot rear setback. The detached single-family home will, will be set back a little bit further off of Hawthorne Avenue. And the proposed stormwater detention facility will be located on the single-family lot up by the intersection of Roswell Road and Hawthorne Avenue. To be able to achieve this plan, the applicant is requesting numerous variances. I think they, they total out to about seven different variances. I'm gonna try to highlight them for you here. First variance, they're seeking a reduction for the single-family lot, lot size from R15, which is a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet, to 13,000 square feet. They're requesting a minimum lot reduction for the townhomes, which is different in RAD, from 7,260 square feet to 2,488 square feet. They're also requesting to increase the maximum lot coverage from 45% to 79%. And finally, they're asking to reduce the minimum lot width from 100 linear feet to, down to 34. They also have some setback requests, which are to decrease the front setback from 40 feet down to five feet for townhomes in RAD zoning category. Reduce the rear setback from 40 down to 18 feet for townhomes in RAD zoning category. And the side setback reduction from 35 feet to 10 feet. These are the front elevations that are proposed for the townhome and, I believe, the single-family home. These are, this is a picture of the subject property as it stands today. You can see the, the area where the church used to, used to be in, on the front half of the property, and then you can see the, the cemetery on the, on the rear half of the property behind the, the retaining wall. These are the pictures of the adjacent properties. Across Hawthorne, there's another cemetery, and then there's single-family homes on either side of this property. Community development recommends denial of the requested variance purely based on it exceeds the, the density allowed under the city's future, future land use classification. In addition, the numerous variances that are required to develop the site as is, and also, there's no open space, and, and we just think this, this will be establishing a negative precedent for the city moving forward to accommodate all these variances and increased density with this development. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Martin? Is the applicant in attendance? Welcome back, Mr. Moore.
Thank you. Thank you. Again, Kevin Moore here on behalf of the owner and applicant. I'm gonna start by asking that, the, what the applicant and owner would like to do tonight is request that the planning commission vote to continue or table this application to next month. We received staff's analysis, and I had met with staff, you know, prior, in working with the applicant as well, to try to figure, really figure out this site. It does have an existing cemetery owned by the, the church, to try to figure out this property going forward. And that is a, a means to enable the cemetery to be, have some sort of maintenance, an ongoing maintenance and a provision for that, as well as figure out what to do with it other than have a, a big blank lot owned by a church that's not operating there anymore, and is not at that location anymore, with a cemetery that, and piece of property that is one that, the future maintenance of which could be, you know, could be questionable. The staff's comments from last week, we've taken those, we've been able to have some discussions, and we can make, what we think are some material changes and address their comments, and see whether we can come up with, in conjunction with the owner, a way to provide for a development plan and a proposal that would be much more, gain some positive traction with staff as far as identifying some of those very specific comments, including a reduction in total number of units, so that we're within the future land use plan. That would be primary. And once, unless that occurs, then it will allow for some additional changes to take place that could likewise affect how this will go forward, and we'd like that opportunity with, with this application. So with that, just want to kind of give you that background. I only received that late this afternoon from the client who needed to talk to the various parties involved with, with the staff report in hand. And so once I received that, since I was gonna be here, wanted to just present that to you so I could better explain what's going on with this. Because it is something, a little bit atypical with a project like this, and so I felt better just coming forward and at least letting it be stated publicly what it is and what we're trying to do here.
Excellent. Any questions? Well, Mr. Moore's here, any questions for him, since he's gonna change the plan and request it to be tabled to a future meeting? Okay. Well, and out of respect for those that are in attendance, we're gonna go ahead and open the floor to anyone that would like to speak in favor of or opposition to this application at this time. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and sign the sign-in sheet at the podium.
I'm Casey Clavin. I live on Roswell Street, 1475 Roswell Street in Williams Park neighborhood.
Good evening, Ms. Clavin.
Good evening. This property is on the boundary of our neighborhood. I'm happy to hear that staff has recommended denial of this. I had not previously seen the proposal until just now. I can assure you there would be a lot of, a lot of concern for this project within the neighborhood. And the other, the other, the specific point that I want to make, and I don't know that anybody here is gonna be able to answer the questions about it, is what about that, that cemetery behind there? That's, that's, it's an historic cemetery. It's not a flamboyant or architecturally beautiful cemetery, but it is an historic place. And the, the drawing, as I understand it, leaves no access to that. And I'm curious, what happens when a property has been a cemetery? Can it be used for anything else? And, and two, who is the owner of that cemetery?
Those are all very good questions, and I'm sure that the applicant will be glad to provide an answer for those when they bring it forward for a vote on continuing the property. But we appreciate you coming out tonight. And if there's anyone else that would like to come forward and speak now in favor of or opposition to this application, please do so at this time. Okay. If we get a motion? A motion, Mr. Roberts, to table?
Table.
Will you turn your mic on, Mr. Roberts? For the benefit of the audience, I'm sorry.
Beg your pardon, plus I've got pollen.
Again, it's a motion, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'd like to make a motion at this time to table zoning request, Z15-003, rezoning of subject property from R15 RAD conditional for development of six family houses.
Motion to table, Mr. Roberts, second. Mr. Kemp, second. All in favor? The item is tabled 7-0 to May 11th, 2015. Thank you very much. All right. The next item on the agenda is Z15-005, and I believe this item is scheduled to be tabled as well, but this is zoning request, Z15-005, annexation and rezoning of the subject property from NS Smyrna to. NS Smyrna to OI Cobb County. From NS Smyrna and OI Cobb County to MU Conditional. It's 8.7 acres and the landlot 880, 881. This is at 2,800 and 2810 Spring Road. Nealon Developers, it's to be tabled into the future meeting. Is there any background, anything you want to say, Mr. Staub's?
Joey Staub's, Planner One with Community Development. This project is of, meets the threshold of development of regional impact outlined by Atlanta Regional Commission and Georgia Regional Transportation Authority, so it is under review by those organizations. Once they are done with the DRI review, they will provide proposed conditions that will be incorporated into the rezoning conditions. And the recommendation that will go to Planning and Zoning Board.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Staub's. This is a public hearing, since it's going to be tabled, I imagine the applicant's not here, but if there's anyone that would like to come forward at this time and speak in favor of or opposition to zoning application, Z15-005, please do so, please do so at this Might be your only chance to speak, we get the gavel pretty quick at this point in the night. State your name and address for the record, please, and welcome.
I'm Samaji Barnes, in 5934 Brookmere Court, home address, Amableton, Georgia.
Welcome, Mr. Barnes.
Thank you. I came to the meeting because I'm actually a business owner in that particular development and, or should I say, that particular plaza. And I'm trying to get some understanding of the rezoning of what they actually want to do with the property. So I'm not really familiar with how everything is done here today, but I came to see exactly, I know it's for a multi-use, they want to change it, so as a business owner, I'm concerned about what is going to take place in the next few years.
Absolutely, and I'm sure Mr. Staub's will be glad to give you a card so he can get your information and keep you posted as they progress through it. And a plan like this does take some time to get all the information together, and based on having other agencies involved, I imagine it's going to take a little bit of time for them to finalize the approval process to get back to us.
Okay.
Okay?
So, and no one from the company showing up, does that mean it's, they're just, it's just kind of...
It was, it was scheduled to be tabled prior to the meeting, and it's commonplace that the applicant doesn't, doesn't come when it's already scheduled to be tabled or requested to be tabled by the applicant.
Okay, all right, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. One last shot, speak in favor of or opposition to?
Kind of same situation.
Okay. Please state your name and address for the record.
Right, I'm Joe Alvarez, 2289 Cumberland Drive, Smyrna. And I too would like to get a card just to find out what's in the future plans. I'm a business owner there, I have a dental practice there, been there for about 30 years.
Oh, wow.
So, well, not, not me personally, but the practice has been there, so just wanted to find out what's going on, so.
Very cool. Well, Mr. Staub's will be glad to keep you guys posted or be as much information as possible during the process.
All right, sounds good, thank you.
All right, welcome. All right, at this time, we need a motion for case Z15-005. Please turn your microphones on. A motion, Ms. Holmes?
Oh, I got the wrong thing going. I'd like to make a motion to table zoning request, Z15-005, annexation and rezoning of the subject property from NS Smyrna and OI Cobb County to MU Conditional, 8.7 acre, acres landlots, 880, 881, 2,800 and 2810 Spring Road, Nealon Developers LLC. This item, I'm requesting this item be tabled until the completion of the DRI review by the Atlanta Regional Commission.
We got a motion for tabling by Ms. Holmes, a second? We got a second, Mr. Campo, I believe, is that a second, Mr. Campo?
Mr. Rice.
Mr. Rice, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Rice, got it. All in favor? The table, the continuance is approved 7-0. All right, the, for those of you in attendance, it was brought to my attention this evening that we are losing one of our beloved board members, Ms. Dale Holmes, who has...